It's powerful. God renew your strength in Jesus name. Let's rise up on our feet. If you know God is the owner of your life, is your God, just worship him this morning. Worship him. If you know you don't have any other God, just worship him. Hallelujah. Father, we thank you this morning. We worship you for you are great and greatly to be praised. Thank you for who you are, even far more than what you do. Because you do all you do because of who you are. You show your mercy because you're a merciful God. You give us the blessings of life because you are a giver. You redeemed us from the curse of sin because you are a redeemer. You answer our prayers because you are the God of love. So we thank you for who you are, far more than what you do. We worship you. We thank you. We love you, Lord. We say you are worthy. And Lord, we are grateful unto you. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. If you have a thousand tongues, they are not enough to thank you. They are not. They are not. Lift up your voice and just thank him this morning. Just thank him this morning. Appreciate him this morning. Father, we thank you. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Father, the entrance of your word gives light and understanding to the sinful. We pray as we go into your world, open our heights of understanding and cause your blessing to come upon us. Bless us in the word today. Help us to be doers of your word. Thank you, Father. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Before you sit down, help me tell your neighbor, you don't have to wait till December 31st to thank God. Let me tell another person. Let me tell another person. If you wait till December 31st, it's always a busy moment. Your prayer starts now. I say your prayer start now. Your thanksgiving starts now. So be conscious of the fact that you need to start thanking God. So we have entered into a mood of gratitude and thanksgiving. Let's have our seats. By God's grace, this week we are starting our convention. The Evangel faith international mission annual conventions is something we do once in a year. And it's starting this week by 22nd of November, Thursday to Sunday 25th of November. And I pray it will be a time of encounter with God. That amen is too cold. I said it's going to be a time of encounter with God. I am bold to say it again and again. There has never been a year that I attended the convention that God does not do something great in my life, spiritually and tangibul physical testimony. And those testimonies always happen immediately after the convention. From 2007, I have records of great things God did. 2007, I went for convention and I prayed to God. The following month, I became a manager in my company. 2008, I went to convention. I prayed to God. Lord, I want you to settle my marital matter. That few days before the convention, God sorted that. I remember 2008 convention. A sister that so much, was so much worried about the fact that I was not married, came to that convention with a lady she has been taking care of so that she can match make us. But before, before they could, you know, fulfill their agenda, God has settled the matter. Praise the Lord. She told me that herself and her husband, they've been worried. Ah, Moses, what's issue, what's issue? So they saw a babe in their area and decided to take care of the lady. They said, this one is good for, for our brother. And they arranged so that we meet at the convention. But before they showed up, God has showed up. God will show up for you. You know, there is something about good intention. But good intention is always not God's intention. And that's the reason why we have to be sensitive in the spirit. 2009, amazing testimony. We left the convention in November. By December, two weeks after I was at a place and then I started getting calls from people. I was not in the office. I started getting calls from people and people started congratulating me. I said, what happened? Something glorious happened that turned my life around. 2010, after the convention, I got first assignment to go on international. I can't be counting. So you can see consistency of testimony. 2011, at the convention ground, one of my brothers was having an interview and that was the beginning of his breakthrough. 2012, I was not at the convention ground. I was in South Africa because of the blessing that God did. I can count on and on and on and on and on and on and on. So what am I talking about? When God decides to start a meeting in his wisdom, he doesn't take it as a joke. You must value what God values. Write it down. You must place value on what God has valued. So this morning, I want to preach the message I preached last year at this time. And I want to talk about connecting to the blessing of God in special meetings. Connecting to the blessing of God in special meetings. Connecting to the blessing of God at special meetings. And let's look at the book of Genesis, chapter 49. First of all, we look at Genesis, chapter 49. And then we read verse 10 and then we read Matthew. We read Deuteronomy, chapter 16 and verse 16 and then we read Matthew, chapter 18 and verse 20. And then we read Acts, chapter 2, verse 1 to 3. So let's start with Genesis, chapter 49 and verse 10. Bible says, "The scepter shall not depart from Judah, nor a lawgiver from between his feet until she comes. And to him shall be the gathering or the obedience of the people." Bible says, "The scepter shall not depart from Judah." A lawgiver shall not depart from his feet until Shiloh comes. And unto him shall the gathering of the people be." The Shiloh in that passage is both a place and a person. So the Shiloh is a place where God has appointed for the people of Israel to gather and meet with him. They meet with him at every time, but there is a time that they must gather before God in Shiloh for special meetings. And but Shiloh is more than a place because when God calls us for a meeting, he's not just calling us for a gathering. He's calling us not to just a place. He's calling us to himself. He's calling us to a person. And that's the reason why the word of God says, "Until Shiloh comes and unto him." He didn't say, "And unto it shall the gathering of the people be." Are you getting my point? In a proper English, what you should see in that place is that, "Until Shiloh comes and unto it shall the gathering of the people be." But he said, "Until Shiloh comes and unto him shall the gathering of the people be." That is, Shiloh is not just a place. It is also a place of our encounter with a God. So when God calls a special meeting, he's not just calling us into a place. He's also calling us to meet him in person. And that's the reason why the scripture gave us a picture of our gathering before God. In Hebrews, chapter 10, he said, "You have not come to a mountain that can be touched." You have not come to just an ordinary mountain. He says, "You have come to Zion, the city of the most high God." What does that mean to us? As we are here this morning, gathered here in the house of God, there are other people that are gathered in other places in Lagos, Nigeria, in the presence of God. So we call this place house of testimony. Somebody called that other place. It can be a gay star Christian church. It can be a redeemed Christian church of God, in our chapel. We have different denominations. We meet maybe at the same time or at different times. And there are other people that are on other time zones. So some people, for example, in Dubai, they don't meet on Sunday like this because in Dubai, this is a workday. So they meet on Friday. Are you getting my point? But regardless of where we are, the gathers of the time zones, anytime we gather in the presence of God, we have gathered in Zion. It is no longer a denomination. It is not the presence of God. We have logged on to the headquarters. Are you getting my point? Are you get? It's like working a global organization that is connected globally. One should log on into the system. You have logged on to the headquarters. Are you getting my point? So when we come into the house of God, we have come to Zion, the city of the most high God. We have come to a city. We are not limited by the four walls of where we are. We have come to the city of the most high God. And we are the participant in that city. He said, "You have come to God himself, the father of all. You have come to the church of the firstborn, right start in heaven. You have come to the spirit of just man made perfect." That is, when we gather in God's presence, we are not just having an ordinary meeting. We are having a spiritual meeting. The spirit of those who have gone to rest ahead of us, they are meeting with us. Abraham is here in our meeting today. They are saying, he said, "We have come to the numerable company of angels." So when we count ourselves, so let us assume that we are two or three. We are not two. We don't even know the number. Bible says, "When we gather, we have gathered to meet the uncountable of angels." Uncountable. While I was a kid, you know, we used to play with numbers. And then we say, which number is more? I have 2,000. Somebody will say, I have 3,000. Remember those days? We'd be arguing with numbers. Then somebody said, I have 5,000. Then somebody said, I have 10,000. Then somebody will say, 1 million. Then another one will say, 10 million. Then I say, 1 billion. Then somebody said one day, say, I have uncountable. 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 And then we could not talk. He told us that the highest. The first time I had uncountable, I thought it was a number. Said, "We have what? Uncountable company of angels." So let me start by saying this. Every meeting with God is what? Is a special meeting. Every meeting. It can be in church. It can be outside church. It can be in your house. Every meeting is God. It's not ordinary. And that's why it pains me when you don't place value on what God has placed value on. It pains me. And that's the reason why we need to develop the right attitude. Some people, when great meetings are going on, they will be roaming, walking up and down, things that they cannot do when they are in their offices. They'll be moving up and down. And some of them, they are workers. It's when they want to do their own assignment that they will do. And once they do it, pim, they are moving up and down. May God forgive you. So every meeting is what? Special meeting. But let's continue reading all those scriptures. So don't let me, no, I will move by the spirit, but let me also. Okay, so let's look at the second passage. We have read Genesis 49, verse 10. At least, and I've been able to establish that Shiloh is not just a place. It's also what? A person. Anytime you come into the presence of God, you have not just come to meet with a person, with a, come to a place. You have always come to meet with God himself. So in the book of Deuteronomy, chapter 16 and verse 16, let's look at the instruction God gave the Israelis. God said, "Three times a year, all your males shall appear before the Lord your God in the place he chooses." How many times? In other places, he told them, he gave them the number of times they must appear. Male, then there is special gathering that gave all the Israelite. Three times, you must appear before me. God gave them a special feast. In fact, he gave the Israelite three major feasts that they must do. So he gave them the feast of Passover. So they have other celebrations that they do in the year. But the time of Passover is a special time with God. They must follow some instructions. He gave them another feast, the feast of the weeks. Then he gave them another one, the feast of the tabernacles. So you can see the feast of the unleavened bread, that is a Passover. Then the feast of the weeks, that is Pentecost. Then the feast of the tabernacle. And they shall not appear before me empty. Three times in a year, they must meet with God. So how many times do they meet with God every year? There are many times they meet with God, but there are three that are what? Special meetings. And let me tell you, the New Testament does not invalidate this. So we have seen it and let's look at the book of Acts, chapter 2. The book of Acts, chapter 2. Acts, chapter 2. Let's look at it. Verse 1 to 4. "When the day of Pentecost had fully come, they were all with one accord in one place, and suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind, and it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then there appeared to them then there appeared to them divided tongues as of fire, and one sat upon each of them, and they were all filled with the Holy Spirit. And they began to speak with other tongues, and the Spirit gave them utterance." So I'm talking about drawing blessings from special meetings. So the first thing is to know that all our meetings are what? Special with God. When God calls a meeting, it's special. How do we know? Matthew 18:20. Jesus Christ said, "Wheresoever two or three are gathered in my name," said, "I will be there." Hebrews, chapter 10, talks about our glorious meeting. Every time we come before God, we have logged on to Zion. The apostle said in the book of Hebrews, David or the Samist, the Pentadaros Samet, he saw the same thing. He says, "They go from strength to strength as they appear before God." Where? In Zion. Praise the Lord. So that's the first thing. Every meeting is important. Today's meeting is a special meeting. Every meeting of God. Midweek service is special. Early morning meeting is special. All our meetings is special. No wonder apostle, the writer of the book of Hebrews said, said, "Don't neglect, don't forsake the gathering of brethren." They are not ordinary meeting. That is the reason why it always surprised me when I see some things that people do, you know, the kind of people, some people bring to some Christian meetings. I can relate. I can relate. The same meeting that we have in numerable company of angels. I'll go and bring somebody that just left a club. No, it can't happen. It can't. If I don't know, fine. But if I know, it's an issue. It's an issue. I have to do something about it. Praise the Lord. That's just by the way. So but the second thing is that, but there are times God calls for very special meetings. Very special meetings to move in extraordinary ways. So all the Israeli can move, can meet with God anytime in the year, but there are three times they must meet for very special meetings. Because God wants to do something very special. You don't despite those kind of gathering because God has placed honor in it. Are you getting my point? So for somebody in winners chapel, all the meetings of the year are important. But God, through his prophet, has given them a time in December of every year. He may move it from December to another time. And every year, they call it Shiloh. Are you getting my point? If you are a member of that ministry, you expect God to do what? To move in a special way around that season. Are you getting my point? That does not nullify the fact that all the meetings are special. But God said, through his prophet, except that person has not received from God. One day I was at Kenan Land and as I was praying, God told me, he said, "Organize God of answer prayer meeting." That's where I got it from. Organize God of answer prayer and I will do great things and we appear to my people as God of answer. Now, has God of answer been a great testimony or not? Has it been a great testimony or not? Some of the weddings we did, this, met, one of them, they met at God of answer prayer meeting. Saw somebody that is over 40 years. Nobody has, no, asked her out. She was not married. She came as we were praying. The Holy Spirit just spoke. And the next God of answer prayer meeting. Either the next or two God of answer prayer meeting was her wedding day. It can only be God. The one that we had generally this year, somebody left the place and went to buy a suit. Trusting God for a job and said, "On the day of my interview, this is the suit I will wear." And this got worse in the current job he was doing after buying suit too. But today, miracle has happened. They call him on the day of interview. There is not necessarily you come in suit. Say, ah, suit, Moze, Lord, a prophetic suit. I'm going with that suit. Are you getting my point? Are you getting my point? Why? Because when God calls for a special thing, he wants to do something very special. So he said, oh, they must appear before him three times. And then God placed honor on those meetings. So in the New Testament, in those meeting, God did special things. He didn't say, oh, the New Testament has come. We don't need. On, when was Jesus Christ sacrificed for us? He was sacrificed on the Passover day. Are you getting my point? They will kill him some other days, but it was during the time of Passover. Why? Because that was a special meeting. And as if that was not enough, what is the next meeting that will follow Passover? Is the meeting of the feast of the weeks. Am I making any sense? That is Pentecost. On that day of Pentecost, the Holy Spirit was released. It wasn't ordinary. Why didn't he come the day before? At least they were there for about 10 days, praying. Why didn't he come the day they chose Matthias? Why didn't he come the day? Am I making any sense? Because God placed honor on it. No wonder you see the disciple of Jesus Christ. He will say, "I will carry in Ephesus until Pentecost." You will hear that apostle Paul was doing all his best to meet the Passover. They valued it. They didn't say, oh, we are in the New Testament. We are in the new covenant. We don't value what God value. Let me tell you, anything God places value on, value it. For our church, the time of convention is a special time that God has placed value on. May you not miss the value of it. So how do you connect? So it is one thing for God to prepare blessing for his people. It's another thing for his people to get it. So how do I connect? So number one, you must connect by preparing your heart for an encounter. That's the first thing. Everything starts from the heart. You must prepare by preparing your heart for what? For an encounter. Art, arrangement is key and necessary. But inner arrangement, arrangement from your heart is very, very crucial. More important. So you connect by preparing your heart for an encounter. How? You connect with the topic of the meeting. How? Connect with the topic of the meeting. What is the topic of our meeting in this time and season? God, the great repeater. How many of you have talked about that topic? How many of you? God, the great repeater. I pray you will see the manifestation of God in that direction. That amen is too cold? About two weeks ago, we got an amazing testimony after the wedding of our sister and our brother, Esther and brother Lamede. So I got home that evening and at around 7:30, I got a call from someone, a father who believe in the power of prayer. Who believe in the power of God. And he called me and he said, his son had been in the hospital for like three days with a complicated issue. with a complicated issue. And they have moved from one hospital to a teaching hospital in Lagos. Lagos State University Teaching Hospital. And from Lagos State University Teaching Hospital, they moved to another hospital, Lagos University Teaching Hospital. You know when you are sick, or when somebody is sick, and it's been referred to teaching hospital, you know, the issue is serious, right? And from there to loot. In the first hospital, they did a scan to know what the problem is, and they said, "This is the problem." And went to another teaching hospital, and they confirmed the same thing, that this is the problem. And they said they are going to do a major surgery to correct that problem. And the father in faith told the doctor, said, "I have the money to do this surgery, but I'm not going to spend that money to the doctors. I would rather give that money to God." And he called people to pray. Called some people, and he called me as well. And I prayed with my wife. We prayed for about an hour. Started singing, worshiping God, we prayed. And we told God, "God, turn things around that you will do a surgery. You will send your angels to do the surgery, to do a work of repairs, that by the morning when they wake up to do the surgery, there will be no surgery to be done." And when they woke up in the morning, what happened? The boy that was, you know, stealing blood, the blood ceased. That's the first thing they saw. The blood ceased. And the next thing that happened, the boy that was not able to stew properly, stewed for the first time in three days. And they said, "Oh, let's go and do the scan again." The same people that did the first scan and said, "There is this problem, there is this problem." They saw it, they said, "There is no problem again." I have the two medical reports. The first one, and the father sent it to me, said, "This is the first one yesterday night." He said, "This is Jesus' report." That will be your story. So, what happened? He believed in the power of prayer. We prayed, some other people prayed, everybody joined us together to pray, and God moved. And last week Friday, I was in the house, and this man came and brought a cheque. And he said, while he was praying, God told him that the money you use for that surgery, go and put it in the ministry of Pastor Moses. And as I got the money, as I, who did this, is God the Great Reparar. So, the money is also going to Convention 2018. Are you getting my point? What does it mean to us? The theme of that convention is already working. For everything that needs to be repaired in your life, that Lord will repair it. It is not just about the body. It's about life and destiny. Everything that need repair in the structure of your life, may the Great Reparar repair it. So, how do you connect to the blessing? You connect to the topic of the meeting. So, somebody said, "My case is different." You believe it. You connect to the topic of the meeting. You prayerfully connect to the topic of the meeting. How do you connect? You connect by praying in advance for the meeting. You prayed, you prayed, and you connect to the grace of God on the ministers that will be minister at the meeting. You pray against satanic attack. Because when God calls a meeting, the devil always want to hinder it. 1 Corinthians, chapter 2, verse 18. "Apostle Paul said, 'I wanted to come to you again and again, but Satan hindered us.'" Satan can hinder what God wants to do if you allow him. And that's the reason, we have to be strong and not allow Satan to hinder what God wants to do in our lives. So, you pray against satanic attack. How do you connect to it? Do your best to be physically present. Do your best. I'm not going to meet man, you are going to meet God Himself. It is not about the beauty of the place. It's about the grace that the place carry. Some of the greatest things of my life were received in places that look ordinary. Places that look ordinary. Go and ask all the great ministers of God. The encounters they had, they receive, and not in most of the best places in the world, most of the time. Implicit, some people receive on the mountain. Places that are not convenient. You also know that the best things of your life are put in secluded areas. Am I making any sense? And the grace you receive from that brought about the beauty that you are seeing on the outside. We had the division to liberate the world, the dominion mandate of Bishop and the devil. Where did he receive it? One hotel in Elisha. I look at the hotel. I said, "Is this hotel or something else?" That is where God met with him. One night, God met with a man called Jacob. He said, "So that Lord is in this place." He did not have anything to lay his head on. He used a stone as his pillow. But he saw a revelation of God. He said, "So that Lord is in this place, and I don't know." I pray for you, may you not miss God. So, do your best to be there physically. But if it is not possible for you to be physically present, let your spirit be in tune. That is wherever you are, you are logging on to the place. Am I making any sense? Do you know that you can be somewhere else, but your spirit is in another place that matter? Are you getting my point? We saw it in the Bible. You can be physically in a place. We saw in the Bible, Bab慕德说, that Daniel, he was in the land of Babylon, but his spirit was what? Was in Israel, Jerusalem. So, when he opened his window, there is a way he opened his window. There is a direction. He, he opens it in the direction of what? Of Jerusalem. That may be in Babylon, I'm not from Babylon. And that is the same thing that must happen in your spirit. You are in the world, but you are not of the world. Your spirit must be tuned to where your citizenship is. Are you getting my point? You bring God to your home. Let me tell you this, there are places in Nigeria that you enter. The, the people are in Lagos, but they represent their country. There are places in Lagos that when you enter there, you know that it's like you are in India. Because the people that are there, they are what? They are Indians. Have you experienced it before? There is a place somewhere along Ogudu. Ogudu, or just between Ogudu, they call it Chinatown. From the building, you know that this is not Nigeria. Are you getting my point? From the structure of building, you know that this is what? China. So, you can bring the ambience of your citizenship into your locality. Are you getting my point? You can bring the ambience of heaven into the place where you are. So, what does it mean? You are not at top of the Convention ground. You are in Lagos, you are in Ibadon. But what you are doing is that you are connecting to the place. So, about three years ago, Kene Copland, the great man of God, came to Nigeria at Winner Chapel, and he came for a conference. I was supposed to be there, but because of some other things I had to do, I could not go. So, every night, I stayed back to do what? To connect to them life. Every night. So, I will stay at work. I will log on, and I will begin to, you know, receive. So, one night, as I was there, you know, I was, it was late. Everybody had, no, we are closed, people have gone, most people have gone home. I was there. And at the point, I brought out an offering, and I did like this. And somebody saw me. I said, "Moses, what's happening?" I said, "I want to give offering." "Is that wish offering?" I said, "I'm connecting to a service that is going on." That is strange. And the person brought out an offering and said, "Moses, I'm also giving an offering. But you know the reason why I'm giving this offering? You remember my sister, all her problem. Please, help me pray that God should intervene." That was in Falamo, the program was going on in Kenan Land. I took the offering, put it in, in an envelope, put my own there, prayed, put it in my drawer. As I put the offering in the envelope, they have received it in heaven. Are you getting my point? That same month, the person that had no child, that had been trusting God for a child, that same month, she got pregnant. Are you getting my point? Are you getting my point? Why? There are people that will be at that meeting that will receive nothing. They were physically there, but they were not spiritually there. But we that were outside, we connected to something. Are you getting my point? So, if by any chance you cannot go physically, let your spirit be what? Be there. Numbers, chapter 11, verse 26. Let me show you something in the Bible. In the book of Numbers, chapter 11, verse 26. Now, I have to rush. Numbers, chapter 11, verse 26. Are you getting blessed this morning? Numbers, chapter 11, verse 26. "God told Moses to call seventy elders of the land of Israel and to impart grace upon them, that the spirit that they carried will rest upon them." One of the ways God blessed us is through impartation. That what He has bestowed on a man, He releases it as grace upon others. Impartation. So, God called Moses, and He told him to call seventy people and impart grace. So, when Moses called the seventy people, on the day of the impartation, since eight of them were around, two of them were in the tents. And what happened? Bab慕德说, that when the spirit of God from Moses rested upon these people, they began to prostrate. But there were two people that were missing. What happened to them? But there remained two of them in the camp. The name of the one was elder, and the name of the other made dad. And the spirit rested upon them, and they were all them that were written. But when not out unto the tabernacle, and they prostrated in the camp, their name was written on the list, but they were not physically present. But grace still located them. I'm very sure the reason why the anointing rested upon them was not, was because they were also in tune with the spirit. It's not that they were doing one crazy thing, maybe committing adultery or fornication in the camp. But because they were in tune, what happened? The Holy Spirit also came upon them. What happened in verse 27? Bible made us to know in verse 27 that, that when the spirit came upon them, a young man saw them and ran to Moses and told them that elder and male dad are doing what? Prostrating in the camp, in your office. Even if you are not at the campground, grace will locate you. I said, "Grace will locate you in your business." Even if for any reason, you cannot come, for any genuine reason, I said, "Grace will locate you." Your testimony will meet you there. But you must be what? You must connect to the place. You must connect to the place. Number three, you must prepare the specific issues in your life for which you need the touch of God. You must prepare. Anna needed a child, and she went determined to Shiloh. Number four, don't be distracted. There will be distractions. In this kind of meetings, there will be distractions. Don't be distracted. Don't be distracted. Let me tell you this, there will be distractions. Don't be distracted. Oh, there are so many other things that are side, side things along the way. And they are necessary. Some of them are necessary. You will see people that you have not seen in years, greet them. Hey, let it be a time of reunion, but don't forget what you have come for. You must be able to draw the line. One of my friends told me a story of how he got his wife. I'm not sure I've shared this story before, or I've shared it before. Maybe in, in EFCC, OOO. He told me how he got his wife. They are pleased, they are doing fine now. He's a Muslim. But he told me, and I learnt a lot from the story he told me. He said, "When it was time for him to get married, I said, 'Now, I want to be married. I want to be serious.'" He said, "He looked at this, he said, 'What kind of wife do I need?'" He said, "I need a wife that is also like a, a strong Muslim like me, and is serious, educated." I said, "There is a major event that they do annually every year." I said, "I will go for that event. That is where I will get my wife." So, he said something that, he went for the event, it takes some days. Said, "I work with my car. I already have a car, I work with my car." He said, "Day one, I was mixing with people, hello, hello." I would see my friend, ah, you, 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 you. He said, "Nothing happened. Day two, nothing happened. Day three, nothing happened." He said, "When it was a day, the last day, a day before the last day, you now remember." He said, "My purpose of coming for this meeting is to do what?" Eh? Eh? Talk to me. He said, "My, this year, I have not come to listen to messages. I have come to do what? To look for wife." He said, "And I've wasted all the days. I have only one more day." He said, "The first thing he saw as dispassion was his car. He said, "It was because I was taking car. That's the reason I was seeing people. The people are moving my car, we are enjoying." He said, "That day, I dropped my car at home. I went there with that car." And I was serious. He said, "That day, when I got there, I saw that lady, I said, 'This is my wife.'" He said, "From the first day, that he has not been seeing anything. He said, 'That last day, as he was getting there, I saw her.'" See, there may be many things that are not right in what he did, but there is something I saw that is right. He had a focus, he cut off distraction. He said, "My car was what? A distraction." That is what I picked. A focus and what? Distraction. I will rather go in public transport than go in comfort of my car and do what? Miss what is important. Are you getting my point? Avoid distraction. And I can show you in the Bible. Jesus' parents took Jesus Christ to Jerusalem. And they were so distracted to the point that they forgot Jesus in Jerusalem. Parents. Bible made us to know that when they found out that Jesus Christ was not with them, what was the first thing that came to their mind? Who can tell me from the Bible? They assumed that he would be with one of their family members. Am I making any sense? They just assumed. The confession was so nice that they forgot their son. Are you getting it? That was distraction. That was distraction. So, you need to do what? To forget distraction. Don't be distracted. Number five, don't limit God in your mind to a particular way. Don't limit God. Some of you, you will go to that place and say, "Ah, it is on Friday night, that something will happen. It may happen on Thursday." If your work will not allow you to go there on Thursday, connect on Thursday. Some of you, you see a pastor on the pulpit. What does this one want to say? "If it is not Pastor Moses, I cannot receive." You have missed it. May you not miss God. If you look at Matthew, chapter 17, from verse 1. Jesus Christ told, you know, He took three of His disciples to mountain of Transfiguration. And on the mountain of Transfiguration, listening something happened, Jesus Christ was transfigured, and Moses and Elijah appeared, and they were with him. And when Peter saw Moses and Elijah, when they were returned, they asked Jesus Christ a question, and they said, "Master, but the scripture told us that Elijah will come before you. Why are we just seeing Elijah now after you have arrived?" What did Jesus Christ tell them? Jesus Christ told them, said, "Elijah has come." They didn't know. "May you not miss God when God show up." I said, "May you not miss God when God show up." So, there are people that say, "Until, do you hope praise for me?" That, don't limit God. Some people will say, "Until, until the message goes on. It may come in the time of praise worship. It may come in the time..." Am I making any sense? When the tyranny of the water comes, then you not miss God. So, don't limit God to walking away. Be open. Find time, the next one, find time to meet with God personally. Don't be too busy not to find time to be alone with God. Number seven, go with high expectation and faith. Go with high expectation and faith. Number eight, don't go empty-handed. Don't go empty. God told them, "Don't appear me before, don't appear before me empty-handed." Go there and serving with what you have. It may be little, but God will recognize it. And finally, release yourself for kingdom service. When people are serving and working, contribute. I'm not saying you should be full of activities. You must be able to draw the line. But I don't expect you to, to sit down and expect people to come and serve you. Most especially if you are a member of this church. You know I'm your pastor. When I get to Convention, what do I become? I become a man in charge of logistics. General duty. Do you see me sitting the seat of pastors? Special seat of pastors? Do you see me sitting the seat of pastors? Serve. Don't sit down. People be serving you and you be complaining. Why can't you be one of the people serving? Are you getting my point? People that are old enough to bear you as their children, they are taking water, you are sitting and drinking. Serve. Serve. But don't be lost in activity. The place is dirty sweep, it has blessing in it. As you are sweeping, you are praying. Lord, I'm enjoying it. One day, nineteen ninety-nine, I went for one conference, Holy Ghost Congress, nineteen ninety-nine, not lucky ninety-eight. Pastor Adebo now said, "The chairs that we used, that we should take it back to the auditorium, if you know the distance." To carry one, long, those long benches, to carry. Immediately, he says, "Young men, come and carry." Most of the young men, they left. They left. Few, they went to carry those things. So we helping ourselves, yeah, help me. One long seat like this, to carry. And we, it's like taking it from here to Abike. I'm not exaggerating, oh. And we took. Immediately, I got to the point and I drop it down. I said, "Lord, I thank you." And what Baba says, "Do what? Take just one." So as I drop it, I say, "Ah, Lord, I thank you." I was panting. Then I heard the voice of God. "Go and take another one." I knew it was God. I was still panting. I said, "Go and that." You cannot, you are not an ordinary person, you cannot do ordinary task. I said, "Yeah." So I went, the distance to trek to the place itself was a problem. So I trekked and I carried another one. Listen to me. And I carried another one. Hey, 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 and I dropped it. Listen to me. By the time I dropped it, my head was already paining me and it's swollen up. On a very serious note though, it's, it was swollen. So I left, I said, "I was happy, I've done the work, I've worked." Later, God told me, says, "Can you see that your head is swollen?" I said, "Yes." "Your horn is exhausted like the horn of a unicorn." You are anointed, he said, "I have lifted up your head." Let me tell you this, it's working for me. There is no place I find myself that I'm at a loop, that I'm a loopless. There is a grace that always lifts me up. When you obey, you will receive the reward of obedience. Rise up on your feet. You may say something that work in my life. At times, God will just create opportunity for you to what? To bless you. What he asks you to do may look stupid, just what? Not today. There is a blessing in it. This year convention, may you encounter God. I said, "May you encounter God." May you encounter God. What I want to achieve today is not just about the convention. I want you to understand the fact that anything God places value on, please value on it. Are you blessed this morning? Lift up your hands to God. You know what I want you to pray for? The theme of the convention is God, the great repairer. Manifest yourself in my life as a great repairer. Manifest yourself as a great repairer in the name of Jesus. Pray. Pray. The season has started. You need to begin to see the manifestation of God. There are things that need repair in your life. Everything that need repairs, in your health, in your spirit, in your career, in your destiny. Pray that the great repairer will manifest himself. He can repair your body. Can repair your body. He can repair your body, can repair your life, he can repair your business. He can do all things. Thank you, Father. In Jesus mighty name we pray. One of the amazing testimony that we had this year, is a particular person that had been sick for some time now. And then we began to pray for, for, for him, sent healing scriptures, healing confession. And I remember about two times I had come to church to pray, I asked you people to join me that there is a family we are praying for. How many of you remember? The same doctors that have gone to do test, they said the problem is a liver problem. Meanwhile, some members of their church, they were mocking them already. The same doctors, they went to do test and they said, "The man has a brand new liver." This thing works. I said, "It works." Why? Because God is a repairer. In the book of Jeremiah, he called himself a potter. He said, "He, when he was making it, something was wrong, he fixed it again." I declare over your life, may God, may God appear unto you as a repairer. May you see the revelation of God in this line? Can you open your mouth and pray? "Lord, I want to see you as a repairer." Thank you, Father. A repairer. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Father. So shall it be. In Jesus mighty name we pray. The testimony of this year convention shall be amazing. God will move in a way that we have not seen him before. You know, yesterday I was at the campground, Philip was there, some of our, and, you know, people went to pray to do, and they are prepared. I know the number of days that Papa has been with the Lord, you know, just praying, just praying. May you not miss your portion. I said, "May you not miss your portion." Father will declare, nothing will stop this conversion. We declare peace and protection upon our members. Thank you, Father, because you have done it. In Jesus mighty name we are praying. God bless you. Are you blessed this morning? Let's sit down. Hallelujah. Hallelujah.